Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Buckles, would you lead us in the pledge?
And my pastor hasn't made it, so I'll do it.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gileard will lead the invocation.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, God, we pause now to say thank you. Thank you, God, for your favor on this county. Thank you, God, for your favor on our leaders. Now, God, as we embark on this meeting, God, we pray for your divine guidance, that your hand will be upon us, that you would help us, oh, God, to make decisions that are not for our benefit, but for the benefit, God, of our children and the community that we serve. God, help us to push ourselves back and see the big picture and do, God, what is in the best interest of all. We ask all of this in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we'll start with Dr. Surrance. He has a presentation he would like to make.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just gonna take a minute. Last, last meeting, we actually recognized several schools for improvements in their graduation rate, and that was our current administrators. And I wanted to make sure that we pointed out that actually those graduation rates are from last year's school year. And with that said, I asked Ms. Michelle Hickelbalden, from currently the principal at Price Middle School, to come in, and I wanted to make sure we recognize her. Michelle, would you please stand up? Michelle, last year, as the principal, she was responsible for leading Crescent City High School last year in their improvement in the graduation rate. So I was very remiss in not having her here. I had the current administrators here, so thank you, Michelle, for all you did last year. And of course, we moved her after the year started this year, and she's done a great job at Price, so thank you again for coming. And I also want to point out, we have one of our members of our leadership team that will be leaving us this week, and I don't see her in the room, do I?
No.
Think she already left? She's still working, but she left early today. Deborah Buckles, wife of Mr. David Buckles, is leaving kicking and screaming. Actually, that's not true.
I'm sure it's true.
She talked about she's gonna be in the grandbaby racing business starting very soon, and she's retiring at the end of this week, and we're very happy for her, yet we're gonna miss her and all the many years she's put in with our district. So when you see her, please give her your regard and thank her for all the many years of service. And David, I know you'll have a lot of extra help at home now.
Oh, there won't be much laying around with him.
You've gotten by without long enough, haven't you? That's the end of that.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Would the representative from the Florida Forest Service come up, please, and introduce yourself and tell us why you're here? We're great.
I'm Jason Fochet, Forest Area Supervisor here for Putnam County.
Could you go to the microphone, please? Thank you. Probably don't want to.
I'm sure. How are y'all? Jason Fochet, Forest Area Supervisor, Putnam County, and I'd like to present Mr. Rick and his board a check from the Florida Forest Service.
We'll take it.
You'll take it.
Can you just explain how that money is derived?
Well, it's, what I'd like to say is, we have two state, three state forests, actually, in Putnam County, and they're not just forests, they're a working forest. We work them every day, just about, so y'all get some of the rewards of that. It's from our timber sales, our recreation fees, and y'all get a percentage of a portion of that every year. So some areas are a little bigger than others, some areas are a little smaller, depends on what kind of timber harvest, you know, we got going on in our recreation. Willacca is a booming little forest. It's small, but recreation down there is doing good, so.
I keep worrying about the national forests and the state going the same route of going to big pines and wagon grass flats and no planted pines anymore, but we're still looking at planted pines and working.
Yes, sir. What's, we don't do beds or anything. We plant them more natural, so you have more of a natural look instead of bedding and all that. But we do promote longleaf pine. That's the natural pine here on the sand hill, but we do promote that, but we do some other planting, too.
So did we have a good timber harvest for harvest this year?
In other words, how much is the check? That's what she wants.
That's kinda what I was going.
That's where you had it.
Thirteen thousand eight hundred eighty-three.
Wow.
Pretty good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I need to go and.
Can you step by here?
Every 30 years, you get.
Jayden, we gonna plant trees.
You gonna plant trees?
Yeah.
Yeah, why didn't you make trees?
Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Thank you, yes. Appreciate you coming out.
Again, thank you. Okay. Recognition of Seminole Electric for their donation of materials to the Interlochen High School welding program.
Ms. Huff, good to see you. Good to see you this afternoon, board. Today, we would like to recognize Seminole Electric for their donation to our welding program at Interlochen High School, and I have brought with me today Mr. Tad, Thomas Deloach, but Tad, and two of his students, and would you like to come on up and bring some equipment? And also Mr. Bud Broski, who has been from Seminole, who has been working with the Interlochen group, and, and Mr. Thomas.
All right, I'd like to just thank Seminole for all the donations they have donated to us, along with the other schools. Kinda did a little bit better for us, because first-year program, we brought a few things that they've donated that we aren't currently using right now. Brought us a couple stinger whips, whole box of 12, 12 or 15 wire brushes, little goody bag with tips, tip cleaners, electrical tape. They donated 10 brand-new auto-darkening welding hoods for us, box or two of grinding I've got down three four-and-a-half-inch grinders. They gave us a seven-inch grinder, welding gloves, a can of 610 rods, sledgehammers, oxy-fuel hoses, tape measures, torpedo levels, combination squares, straight edges, extension cords, about six tons of steel pipe and angles and plates.
Wow.
Metal workbench we just got, and a good buddy of mine saying we're getting two more of them for workbenches. I'm just pleased that we got somebody in the community that's doing this for us, helping us. That way, I can transfer my skills that I've learned for 20 years to my students like these guys and pass along the experience to them.
And otherwise, if they had not donated this, just a ballpark figure of what we would've had, what you all would've had to spend for it?
Everything they've donated, just not, not counting the steel, I'd probably say at least fifteen hundred bucks.
The steel?
With the steel, probably closer to, everything steel and equipment, probably close to four or five thousand, easily.
Wow.
Steel's not cheap anymore. Back when I first started, steel was pretty reasonable. Now, it's like buying a new truck. It's expensive.
Well, I just would like to say, I'm just thrilled that Interlochen finally has a welding program, and I'd like to thank whoever, Ms. Huff and whoever else is responsible for that, and thank you so much for your leadership.
Yes, ma'am. About some, I set out a couple years ago. I kept hounding, and once I found out Mr. Helms was the new president out there, I kept hounding him.
President?
Or principal.
He's the president.
I was like, hey, we need a program out here. What can we do? And I guess aggravating him enough, he talked to the right people, and everybody was good with it, so I'm pleased with it.
So it started, correct?
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're still waiting on electrical to get put in and all that, but we've got the machines, we've got our booths, ventilation, everything's set up. They've got portable generator welders for us right now. We're just waiting for the company to come in and actually run all the permanent electrical.
So how many students are there enrolled?
Ma'am?
How many students?
Currently, I have about 65 to 70 in all my classes.
That's awesome.
And supposedly a waiting list for next year to come in.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. There's nothing for those kids.
That program will never lack for students.
That's right.
Hopefully, it'll keep me there for 20 years till I retire, so.
Bud, could you, you have any comments you wanna say about Seminole's role in this?
Well, Seminole's very excited to be a partnership in the success of Putnam County, and no better way than to do it in youth, and especially the vocational programs and job skills that maybe we can use someday, and hopefully, we sent some welders. I attended, we sent some welders. We talked at the career day, we showed them, talked about safety and some experiences and opportunities. And the welders that we sent are actually Putnam County High School graduates, so there is hope out there, there is jobs, there is careers, and Seminole really wants to improve the life that we live, or the county that we live in, and we're excited to do that. We were thankful for the opportunity. We hope to do it again.
Well, thank you, and thank you.
Before we leave, could we get a picture of all the guys together? Ms. Huff, would you mind being in the picture?
Look up those face guards, please. Look at that pretty rose being amongst all those storms.
Bud, may crack that lens, now. Get that wide angle there. I'm wanting to talk around.
Thank y'all again.
I'd like to invite a representative, and I think it's probably Sam Carr, and I don't know if anyone else, from the Bartram Trail Committee, to make a presentation. Oh, look, BJ! How are you? To Marilyn, is it to Marilyn? James A. Long Elementary. Oh, and Helen, hey!
We're team, guys.
That's true, that's true. Let's see, the weather outside looks just like it did on September the 30th, 2017, when we held the first annual Bartram Frolic on the riverfront. And the Bartram Frolic started out as a recreational-type festival, which Willacca is known for its festivals, and we had some people step up, and one of them was BJ, and Helen was the other that came up with the idea of having a passport-to-the-pas program for the kids on Saturday. And then the St. John's Riverkeeper and St. John's River Water Management stepped up and said, "We wanna do something all week long." As a result, we educated, let's see, seven out of nine of your school's second graders came out to the river center and went through a full day of educational stuff out there, which was really interesting. It was their first field trip that class had ever done, and some of them had never even been over the river before, and it was really, really neat.
Amazing.
And many, many did not want to leave. And then Saturday came when we had our thing, and our incentive program for Saturday was, the school that brings the most kids out on Saturday will give them an award. So that's what we're here to do, is present that award. So we educated 400 second graders on Monday through Friday, and we had over 200 sign up before the rain fell on us on Sunday, and we were counting on 500 kids and families being down there. So we're gonna be bigger this next year, it'll be September the 29th, and it's now not a recreational program, it's an educational recreational program. So that's what we did, and we're happy to partner with the schools and have those folks come down. So we have a check for that class at James A. Long.
Actually, we have Ms. Hestrom from James A. Long to accept the check.
Very good, very good. Congratulations for a class.
By the way, I taught Sam how to read when he was.
Can we get a picture of all of y'all?
Yeah, can we get a picture?
Come over here.
And did we say how much the check was for?
It's $250 for the class.
Very good.
Wonderful. Thank you, Sam. No rain next year.
Lorraine will have that on Facebook.
Anything BJ's involved with this is gonna be successful.
That's for sure.
Yeah, thank y'all. Thank you, Sam.
Sam, you want me to tell some stories on you?
No stories.
No stories on Sam. He can tell them on the way back, 'cause I better know it.
I don't have any public comment cards, okay? So we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll start with Ms. Gileard. Do you have anything you would like to pull?
No, ma'am, I'm taking care. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Buckles?
I'm good.
Okay. Just for a small discussion, which we already talked about, but H5.
H5, okay. I have none.
I have none either, and my questions have all been answered.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus H5.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
In the workshop, we discussed the contract a little, and I just wanted to reiterate the fact that Mr. Douglas has looked at some of that, and I wanted to feel confident as a board, we're very supportive, I believe, in the workshop. It was just something that the second year of LSI, working together with Mosley, I, again, my concern was, we're waiting on a March 21st presentation. Yeah, 27th to the state, and there, but again, Ms. France assured us that no matter what, we'd be working with LSI, but then, Mr. Douglas, you said something to maybe add, so that's why I wanted to pull it and just to reiterate that either way, whatever the state says, we're still good with working with LSI, or if there was something that needed to be added to that contract.
I have drafted some language that I would propose to go in with a motion.
Okay.
There's an argument to be made that if this language goes in the contract, this contract is going to be used as an addendum.
Okay.
To the presentation that the superintendent will make in Tallahassee to the State Board of Education, and that if they see that, this new language in the contract, it might give them an excuse to say, "Well, you're already prepared for an external operator. Why do we even worry about you going forward?" So we could just have a good faith relationship with LSI, that they're going to treat us correctly and not stick us with the bill if we don't use their services that we have contracted for. The attorney in me says, "Put it in writing," but it's a gray area, and the board will have to choose whether you believe that we should place our faith in the, the good faith in operating of LSI on a oral handshake agreement, or if we want to have something more formalized in writing, but the more formalized in writing could open up.
Did you say, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Michael Tooth, I guess, is it something you could email him and just have a interlocal? I mean, it doesn't have to be in the contract, but if you had an email saying this was something we wanted to add, is that something that would be feasible? That's not something.
Ordinarily, the principals, the contract laws say that everything surrounding the agreement should be in the agreement.
Right, right, right. I understand.
And I don't want to do anything to jeopardize our chances of getting the extension.
I'd like to ask a question. Did, did you say that would be an addendum?
That the contract, that the LSI contract, if this were approved by the board, would be part of that contract?
I'd like to say something to the board. My initial reaction during the workshop was, we're gonna go up and ask for an extension, and we've already contracted for it, like, we're going up there saying, we're demanding it, almost.
Right.
So this, this says, to me, this says, "Look, we really want another year. We've contracted, but if you deny us, we're set up for that, too." That's just my feeling. I didn't like it without that. To me, we're going up there and we're saying, "Hey, can we have another year? We already, we're on our way, anyway."
My previous experience, based on things like this, items would be, if you go before the board and you have that in your portfolio to show them, they're gonna say, they're liable to be more inclined to say, "Well, go ahead and go with this firm as a full-time person and not even let you have the additional year." So I would have to favor some type of language that Mr. Douglas could come up with, a good faith agreement, is what I would favor, to work with LSI instead of, instead of going ahead and having a written contract that goes up there in the State Board. If they see you've got that, you, there's seldom gonna be a unanimous vote at the State Board, and they, they want more charter schools. I think that's legislative priority, so I'm even hesitant to talk about this in a meeting, but I just think it would be bad card for them to show, for the superintendent to try to show. I think Kathy's on board with that.
I'll buy that, but could we have a separate agreement with LSI that doesn't go to Tallahassee?
Yeah, why does Tallahassee have to see the agreement? I'm a little curious about that.
They've required us to have a contract in place.
Oh, that was part of their.
That's part of the.
Protocol.
So we are actually the ones that initiated the conversation early on to, you know, when, when we signed the original contract, remember, we talked a little bit about the intent of it is a three-year contract, but we only approved the fiscal responsibility for year one, correct? So in year two, then, that's where the addendum comes in, to add on the fiscal aspects of year two and outline what those services look like. So we actually, as, we initiated that conversation early on because we believe that it shows good faith and good intentions to go before the State Board and make our request with that outside support in place, to show that we, we really are committed, if Mosley doesn't get to the C this year, we are committed to continuing the support they have as they move in that direction. That was the original intent behind requesting the contract this early on. The other piece Laura's gonna speak to is, the services outlined in that are also or would be part of an external operator contract.
And how, we're definitely 100% sure that, that worst-case scenario, they will still give us external?
Yes.
Okay, so there's, there's no deviation from that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that is the option that we submitted.
And they approved it, and they can't take back. No take back.
No, that is the option that we will, we will have to go forward with, and we currently still are working on, because we are not gonna wait to the last minute.
And we do, we have not turned in our top two, which kind of outlines that a little bit further, and we will still have to have that submitted for that board meeting, so that they would approve the top two for external operator. If we are denied, district may just turn around year three. So we're going forward with both tracks.
Right.
Because we have to. We can't wait. But the services that are in this contract are the same services that we would.
Have in the external.
Contract in the external operator. There just would be more services added.
Yeah.
Yes.
Outside of curriculum, all those things.
Yes, it's an additional.
And having conversations with the commissioner and the chancellor, the state wants, one of the things that constantly happens to schools that are in need of improvement, is the district provides supports, and as soon as the school gets safe, they remove the support. And so even if Mosley becomes a C, which is what we are very certain of, we are saying we are gonna continue in this road and in this journey, because we wanna make it a model school. And so this kind of outlines that commitment to making it a model school for our districts.
I'd like to make a motion, unless somebody else has something else, that we approve the contract.
As written.
As written.
Without, I'm just clarifying.
Unless Mr. Douglas thinks I need to put something specifically in it.
The attorney in me says, "Put it in writing." I recognize the sensitivities and the goals that might supersede a desire for a more clarifying and in-writing statement, but I feel like that's, that's your decision to have to make.
Up to the majority of the board.
I will second Mr. Buckles, without the additional language, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move next to, we'll go out of regular session into emergency session. We have two, no, we have an additional item and an emergency item. Do we do them?
No, just the, just the.
Just the emergency, okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the 2017-2018 Personnel Allocation Change Number 15, 15.7.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go back, out of emergency session, back into regular sessions. I'm sorry, I know it does, it scares me, too. Okay. No unfinished business to be discussed, but we do have quite a bit of new business to be discussed, and the first is consensus to advertise new policy 5112.01 and new bylaw 0172 per NEOLA updates 17-2 and 18-1.
Advertise.
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 Consensus to advertise deletion of policy 9210 and 2252 per NEOLA update 17-2, 18-1.
Advertise.
Advertise.
Advertise. Consensus to advertise updates to policy 5111.01, 5120, 5121, 551701, 5540, 8600, 9211 per NEOLA update 17-2.
Advertise.
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 Where do, okay, consensus to, am I on four or five?
Yes, four.
Consensus to advertise updates to policies number 2111, 2431, 2520, 5200, 5610, 5780, 6550, 9150, 9270 per NEOLA update 18-1.
Advertise.
Advertise. Advertise.
Advertise.
Advertise.
Discussion input and action on budget amendments for October 2017. Mr. Odom.
Good afternoon. I've actually got two sets of budget amendments here, but we'll take them one at a time. For October 2017, in the general fund, we had an increase of revenue, of budgeted revenue of $50,935.96. That's broken down into our charter school capital outlay that's transferred in to give to the charter schools. We received $32,858.96 from Square Trade for unreparable chrome books from insurance proceeds. We received $1,955 for backpack donations from Rotary Club, Buddy Home Furnishings, Neil Strickland Roofing, and some payroll deductions, and those were brought into the projects that set up for that in order for them to use the money. We received $7,500 from Dart Transit Company, that was reimbursements for repairs at Aquila Elementary School, and $4,000 from Gen Youth Foundation for IES cooler totes. In the capital projects funds, the only revenue increase was that charter school capital outlay dollars of $4,622. There was no increase in school food service funds, but there was various budget changes as needed within that fund. In the special revenue fund, we had an increase of revenue of $893,722, and that's broken down into the farm-to-school grant, which y'all have heard about, the $43,550. There was a Title I correction of a budget amount of $172, and the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant of $850,000. And in the internal service funds, which is NIFEC, there was an increase of revenue of $221,635, broken down into the Governor's Teacher of the Year Summit, $50,000, and the High Impact Teachers Initiative Grant, $171,635. And in the regional principal leadership grant, they reduced their retained earnings by $1,470 to a pull-in from retained earnings and putting an account strip to spend. So that's the October budget amendments.
Run the Ds online. The budget amendments are.
We always put them online immediately after the board meeting.
Oh, after the board meeting?
After they're approved, we put them online.
So we don't have anything in writing to look at?
I mean, these were on the board packet, yes. And they've been on it for quite a while, yes.
It's there. It was there? I didn't see it, sorry.
That's okay. But we do post them on our website after they're board-approved.
I knew that, yeah, but I didn't see them, sorry.
That's okay.
Now, November?
Okay. For the November budget amendments, the general fund had an increase of revenue of One was a Johns Eastern Insurance claim for a 2011 Ford Econoline van in the maintenance department, $5,634.93, and another $4,399.78 from Square Trade for the unreparable chrome books. In the special revenue fund, we had an increase of revenue of $2,462,520.99. That's broken down into the Title I funds for E.H. Miller, $45,000. We received a grant supplementary instructional support for English language learners of $74,879.62, the Title I Part A UNISIG grant for our Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences of $74,100, student support and academic enrichment grant, $135,737.03, and Title I Part A UNISIG grant, $2,132,640. And in the internal service funds, which is NIFEC, we had an increase of revenue of That's the state personnel development grant, $319,570, and the connecting kids to coverage cooperative agreement, $500,000. And enterprise funds, which is also NIFEC, there was no change in revenue, but they made various budget changes as needed within their objects and enterprise funds. And enterprise funds, which is also Nefec, there was no change in revenue, but they made various budget changes as needed within their objects and enterprise funds. And these come in as budget amendments because a lot of these grants do not come in in time to get into the initial budget phase. So as we receive them and they come out in throughout the year, they come in as budget amendments. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget amendments for October and November 2017.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That time when we get to hear about all the exciting things that our board members have been doing. Ms. Dorgensen, I'm going to start with you.
I haven't had anything much exciting happen this past couple weeks.
She's been taking care of her daughter.
We were at a board workshop when I got the, my, my voicemail transcribes itself and I get text messages. And I had finished an assignment before everybody else and I looked and started yelling. My daughter was in a very, very serious car accident. I spent two weeks in Jacksonville. Nobody wants to do that, trust me. Just driving alone is enough to give me a nervous break. But she's doing well now. She's home. I'll see her again on Thursday. I don't see her every day, so I'm weaning her. And she's doing well. She had a couple of major surgeries and nine broken ribs and metal plates put in because they weren't lined up. But no lung puncture, no heart puncture. It's a miracle. And all of you who were praying because it was on Facebook, boy, I appreciate it. I could physically feel the spirit's presence there. I really could. It was like overwhelming. And, and I really do appreciate the prayers. They worked, I have no doubt. That's it for me. Religion and school, don't say.
It's all right. It's your opinion. Ms. Cummings?
Oh, so many great things going on. I'm really excited to see Mosley and all the great initiatives. That's exciting. I see the motivation and enthusiasm and it is definitely contagious. The teachers are really excited. I got to go read with some kids for literacy week and it was a lot of fun. I enjoyed the time together with the kids. They're just excited. It's a nice atmosphere to be around and it makes me really happy to see. I had a question from a couple of parents and I don't, I thought maybe if I, different schools and the amount that children, this, and maybe we could just ask the superintendent, I don't know, maybe the board knows. But the different amounts that the, the athletes have to pay to play. One specific sport was $350 or no, $315 and I was like, whoa, that can't be right. But then the other school, there was no fee. This was at Palaca High School baseball. And I guess maybe this is something normal, but I didn't know. And so I thought, gosh, you know, I'm, I'm pretty ignorant in this department, so maybe, I know it's, because I felt, honestly, I felt as a parent, if this was my child and this is where we're zoned to go to Palaca High and they could play at Interlochen or Palac, or Crescent City for free. But I had to come up as a parent with $315 for my child to play and you have multiple kids. I was kind of, as a parent, I was, you know, a little upset about that from a perspective that our community, I mean, we don't have to talk about the poverty in our community. So maybe, I just didn't know if maybe the superintendent could just maybe do it.
Can we get back with you on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I know one thing they do is they're doing a lot of fundraisers to try to knock that $315 down. So I don't think that they're actually going to each pay $315.
It is not unusual in, in this day and time through other districts as well that they pay a participation fee, parents do. And it's, it's.
Well, and that's what I said, I was just.
You know, things cost so much anymore, but I think we, we do a good job. But I mean, superintendent may find out more information.
We need to be consistent though. The problem is, we need to charge everybody or nobody.
Well, I think it's based on what they need.
Football usually has traditionally paid, paid for the other sports. And football attendance has been down because of things that have occurred over the last seasons and.
Yeah, and I didn't want to speculate. I just thought if the superintendent.
I'll work with the coach, so I'll ask him.
I'll ask Mr. Weaver if he would mind just.
I'll ask Alan tomorrow.
But I mean, across the board, like I said, I think from what just the random conversations I've had, Interlochen and Crescent City charged nothing for the same exact sport. And again, I just felt like.
They have different needs.
Well, they, yeah, exactly. What it is, is that Palaca makes them have matching bags, matching cleats, matching warm-up suits. And all those things are expensive. And it, again, it's just something that I thought should be brought to, just the truth would be nice to know.
You could, you could call Alan. He works at St. John's River State College.
Well, I know that part's true, but I didn't want to say weightlifters pay this much and Interlochen, Kierous Country play this much. And again, it just across the board kind of thing and just being aware of that. That's all I was asking.
We'll investigate that and report that back to you.
That's all I wanted. Thank you.
We could possibly, we could possibly be funding the program appropriately and they may still be charging a fee into a fundraiser for additional.
Yeah.
Yeah, for matching bags.
Yeah, that's all I want. But if it's mandatory, you cannot play the sport if you don't have to have the money. And that's what it was presented and I, that would be a question I would want to know. If you don't pay this amount and you cannot be at fundraisers depending on your transportation or where you live, I don't know. Do you have to pay this fee before you can even be admitted on the team?
Because they're going to match.
They, well, not necessarily. Crescent City's basketball team, I saw them play and some had the shoes.
But they don't have.
And the reason I say that is because I bought a pair for my nephew. But, and then there were some kids without them. So they weren't denied the right to play. Yes, you want to look good when you're out there, especially when you see a team walk in the gym and all of this stuff. And they pull the pants and they come off like that, they button up and everything. They want to raise their monies. But the coaches provide opportunities for them to fundraise. And if they don't fundraise, I'm sure they're not going to leave the kid hanging out there. But again, do, do your homework.
Yeah, we'll, we'll let you know, sure.
That's all.
And being a former, being a former coach, I mean, they raise money all the time, but I think you're asking, is that, is that a requirement to participate?
Right.
Whatever they find out.
You, you could be, yeah, that's all. Just some clarification there.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Mr. Buckles?
Well, building on that, I had the good fortune of attending a wrestling match over the, over the holidays at Interlochen High School or holidays over the weekend and, and seemed like a holiday to me because it was a weekend, but anyway.
Every day's a holiday to you.
I got to watch a, I got a second cousin that lives out there and his wife teaches at, at, at Interlochen Elementary School. And their son, Cade Mason, is a wrestler at Interlochen High School. And I went and watched. He pinned all of his opponents and.
He's in the paper today.
Well, I haven't seen that part of it, but I'll, I'll look at, but he, he did a, he did a fantastic job as all the kids out there. So, you know, and I know they have to buy their stuff as well. But I enjoyed seeing that we even had the program at Interlochen High. And then you, I, I went to the archery tournament at Jenkins Middle School the other day and, and I had a granddaughter shoot. And she shot one of the best scores in the state, so she'll be going on to the state competition, bar two later this month.
Just tell them she shot the highest for Putnam County.
Anyway.
She shot a 290, better than all the.
Anyway, I know that I bought, I, I know that I bought carrying cases for their bows. So I know that not everything's bought by the sport. But anyway, it, it, it's so neat to see all those kids involved in the stadium. And the stands were just full of parents of the kids there at Jenkins. It was, and grandparents. So it was, it was really neat. Yeah, you shouldn't have missed it. They called your name to be there. You weren't supposed to not miss, so. I was most impressed with Mosley's plan today. I, I feel like they're certainly on the right track. And it is, it is a matter of taking it by the horns and doing the right thing. You know, you could have turned that into a pre-K or kindergarten center and, you know, removed the F and played all kinds of games like the other districts do. But you hit it head on and I have to admire your instructional team for doing that. So that's, that's a, that's a very good plan. And, and I appreciate the board voting unanimously to give them the chance to meet before the state board without those things in writing that could cause them some problems. But the last thing, I, I did attend the legislative session in Tallahassee last week and met with different ones up there. And I think our, our status looks real good for Putnam County in this coming into the legislative session. But, you know, you, I'm hesitant to say how good because somebody will read it in the paper and then, then you'll have lobbyists pushing to get us kicked out so they can get their stuff kicked in. So I'll just let it go with it. Looks very optimistic for us. Very optimistic.
Sounds good. Okay.
Okay.
You're done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Just, just want to again commend our teachers and our paraprofessionals, our employees in the district at the teacher of the year celebration. And they added something new. They recognized administrators. They recognized substitute teachers. It, it, because it takes all of us doing what we do to help make our, move our district to where we want to be. So thumbs up to that committee that did that. A great job. Basketball, I, I really love sports. I really love sports. I really love sports. But I notice now that we are getting a lot of student athletes. We're not just having kids that do well on the court, on the diamond or wherever they're playing. But these kids are now doing what they need to do in the classroom. Palaca High, 23 and 2, you just don't get that way unless you are committed. I know they practice on Saturdays and, and they're serious. Interlochen High Coach Belton is close to his 300th win. He had retired and went back. He even, he never really left. He was just working for no compensation other than the fact that he love, loves kids and, and that's just great. Even Crescent City, all of our teams are doing well. And my vision one day for this district is just like Jacksonville does. When they have the signing day where we have all of our athletes, our, our archery students, our wrestlers, our basketball, our football and actually sign and, and because we're not just saying sports is it. These are kids that are doing what they need to do in the classroom. And it would just be a powerful message to our other kids that are coming up. And that's that.
Thank you. I'd like to piggyback on what Ms. Gilliard said about our basketball teams. We're all, all our teams are going into the district playoffs.
Yeah.
It's been very exciting. I sat across court from Ms. Gilliard at a game that just about gave me a heart attack, like the game last night. And I looked at her and she was jumping up and down and screaming and carrying on. It was just a sight to see. But it was.
All I told them, they were up by about 18 points. And all of a sudden, they took their feet off the accelerator and I just kept saying, keep your foot on the gas, keep your foot on the gas. And, and we got out of there with a three-point win. We almost lost because they took the pressure off. Full court press until we run them in the ground.
But anyway.
Period.
It was, it, it's, it's been great for all three of our high schools to, to advance so far in basketball. I've been involved in something that I haven't been involved in before in a long time. And I'm participating in a book study at Palaca High School led by their principal, J.T. Stout. Mark is involved in that as well. The name of the book is A Grading Smarter, Not Harder. And it, it's just unbelievable. And if you've not read that book, you need to.
Can you say the name a little louder and a little slower?
A Grading Smarter, Not Harder.
Like Working Smarter, Not Harder. Okay, I got you.
I wish this book could have been around 41 years ago when I started teaching because I had it all wrong. And I had it all wrong for a long, long time.
When you taught me, that's the reason I couldn't write as good as I can.
But anyway, it's quite, actually a large group. There's a morning group and Mark's got the book. Morning group and an afternoon group. And I, I believe that it should be required reading for all teachers. And especially for every teacher that comes to teach in Putnam County, they need to read this book. And the two key, key components for me are that learning is more important than grades and relationships are crucial.
Yes.
And, you know, and expounds on the reasons why. So that, that's been awfully exciting for me to participate in that. I had another exciting event, judging the county spelling bee.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my goodness. We got some smart kids in this county. Again, Jaden Wicker was the, crowned the winner. And he will participate, and I'm not sure when it is, but the, go to Jacksonville to compete in the spelling bee. Let's see, oh, gosh. I got to be involved in the, is it community assessment team for Mosley? I've been on that since its inception. And they made a presentation last week to all the, the members. And then they made a, a presentation today in our workshop. And it was a very emotional experience for me both times I participated in that. To see what is going on at Mosley. The excitement is just amazing. And to see what the students are doing because of what the teachers are doing, because of what the administration is doing. It's just fabulous. And, you know, hopefully, when Mosley becomes our model school for elementary schools, then all of our elementary schools can, can participate. One more thing, the fair begins March 16th for over a week. And if you have any questions, just call Wheezy and she can answer them for you. And that's all I have. We will go adjourn this meeting and we'll take five minutes before we, oh, yeah, y'all need to talk. I got so excited about what I was talking about.
Everything is going well in the legal department. I, I did want to take this opportunity to introduce formally Linda Campbell, who is an attorney with the firm. And she's been a lawyer for 32 years. Brings a wealth of experience in litigation. She's been with our firm two years. And you've already seen her participate in district matters, truancy and expulsion hearings. And she will be taking an even more active role. I'm not going anywhere. Dallas is not going anywhere, but Linda will be right alongside the team in supporting the, the legal affairs of the district.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Dallas has a new baby.
Thank you.
Did you see pictures? When she was born, when he was born.
My turn?
Yeah, it's your turn.
We'll let you.
She's talking about Charlie being born, I think.
No, I was talking about Dallas's new baby.
Talking about athletics, kudos to Crescent City High School soccer team.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if you saw that in the paper, but they play tomorrow night. And my understanding is if they win tomorrow night, as a matter of fact, they beat, they beat Santa Fe High School, who had beaten them three times this year. But my understanding is they win Wednesday night, they'll be in the, the final four. Is that?
That's awesome.
So that's, that's great. And that history will be made. And we will definitely honor them at the school board meeting, you know, if they make it that far. Speaking of state competition, the Palaca High Robotics Team competed at the state level. And I actually, Ms. Renee Huff and I went and saw a demonstration, the Palaca High, Inarken High Robotics Teams at Georgia Pacific last week. And I was blown away by what these kids do with robots. They designed these robots and, I mean, I'll, I'll ask them to come and actually do a demonstration. But we're going to have the Palaca High Robotics Team, we'll do a presentation for them at our next board meeting since they made the state playoffs, if you will, in robotics. They didn't win the state championship, but they competed at the state level. So, but it's amazing what they're doing. And these kids will be, you know, be getting jobs out there that probably don't exist yet because of what they're learning. So doing a great job there. Just a reminder, our second meeting in March, we have a meeting in March 6th. The second meeting, which you voted on today, will be March 19th, which is a Monday night. It's a night meeting, South Putnam, and that will be at 7 o'clock. And Ms. DeCabelis, that will be at City Hall in Crescent City. And that will be right after the superintendent's advisory meeting at 6:00.
7 o'clock?
So it's a 7 o'clock board meeting, the second board meeting in March. March 6th will be a regular meeting here.
He's sleeping.
At 7:00. That'll be another night meeting on March 6th, here.
Say the game, March 6th?
March 6th will be our next meeting here.
Right.
That's a night meeting.
That's a night meeting at 7:00.
At 7:00.
Okay.
And then the second meeting will be in Crescent City.
And then the third one we changed was May.
It's, it's on there.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was a night meeting.
But we do have a night meeting at Inarken. Don't have the date in front of me.
Just email us.
That's what you requested, so we set those up.
The times. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, they're all 7 o'clock, those night meetings.
Oh, okay. Great.
Reminder, this Friday, Jenkins Middle School is presenting a play, their, their annual play at Jim Pignato Theater at 7:00 PM, I believe. It's at 7:00. Check the time. But that's, that's getting to be a tradition with Jenkins and of course, those kids feed right into the high school program. So please come out and support that. Final thing, last night at Palaca High, we had the Collegiate High School meeting for parents and students. And they had a crowd full in Panther Den. And if anyone did not attend. And if anyone did not attend that, you have to attend that to be a part of that collegiate high school program. If you don't, did not make that meeting last night, tonight at 6:00 at Interlaken High School in the media center, they will have another meeting. The college will have that meeting. But the Collegiate High School, we're in the second year, and I'm telling you, that's booming. I mean, kids are able to earn college credit as freshmen, able to get an A.A. at the same time they graduate. So that's our, part of our expansion of our acceleration program, so it's going very well. And that's all I have. Great things are happening in Putnam County.
Don't forget, Palaka High girls have a softball game Friday, Friday night at about 6 o'clock.
Okay.
It's hard, it's hard to be in all these places at one time.
We would be remiss if we didn't mention Mike Stevens' girls' basketball team at Interlaken High. I mean, I guess for ye, he says a couple of decades, or maybe a decade, that they had not won, and they, they made it to the district, I mean, they were just great, had done a great job.
We have a lot of things to be proud of in Putnam County.
We sure do.
Yep, really do.
We sure do.
Thank y'all.
Okay, so now we're gonna go, we're gonna recess for about, adjourn for about five minutes, and while everyone empties the building, that's not supposed to be here for executive session. Do I need to do?
Yes.